I'd like to call the regular meeting, City Council, on Tuesday, June 22, 2021, at 7:00 PM, here at the City Council chambers, at 7:00 PM. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the way, United States, America, to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, for God, indivisible, in the just process. Can a clerk take the roll?
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya.
Here.
Alderman Rida. Alderman Fairwell.
Here.
Alderman McGee.
Here.
Alderman Carr. Alderman Rol.
Here.
Alderman Johnson, sir, to you.
Poor Alderman, myself, we got a quorum. We have a presentation of general proceedings, we need a motion to approve the City Council minutes from June 8, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Rol, is her second. Alderman Montoya on the question. Alderman Fairwell.
Couple things, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'd like to question, I guess, ask for a change under public comment on the minutes. I noticed that Alderman Johnson entered the room, public comments bring the total number of members for the meeting to seven Aldermen and the Mayor, for a total of eight City Council members for all other matters. There are seven members of the City Council. There are.
Have you discussed this issue?
I know we have. I can't just let this go.
Several times. You know, you can state your objection on the record, you can vote not to approve the minutes in regards to the ordinances and resolutions, I did remove any reference to City Council or corporate authorities.
I noted that.
And so, this was probably just something that was missed. Not that I agree with you in that regard, but if that's what you need to do with the minutes, that's...
Well, if they aren't going to be changed, I'll vote against it.
Okay. Any other questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
No.
Alderman McGee.
Nay.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Alado.
Aye.
Still fails. All right, public comment, is there any public comment?
How you doing? My name is Denver Coates, I live at 12758 Southwestern. My concern is the hospital and the parking. I understand it's, um, it got really serious. I mean, in the beginning, it might have been fine, but right now, what's happening is, all the nurses are parking on Western and the side of my house. Then they park there all day for eight hours, which I fought with them, and they said, "Well, it's a public street, we can park wherever we want." So, I said, "Okay." I told her, "All I want to do is be able to go to the store and come home like everybody else, and have a place to park." The only thing is, I had came up with a couple solutions that might help. All I said, I had went to the police station and talked to them, and told them my feelings and the pictures of who's parking there all day, to maybe give them a citation or whatever. They're even getting brave enough to park on the neighbor's house soon, even though it says resident parking. So, my solution was, just put two officers, um, one on Western, um, by Quebecus, and put one on the other side for one hour. It's just to chase them nurses back to where they're supposed to, in the parking lot where they're supposed to park. None of them want to do it. And it did happen, the officer did, I show, I did look one morning, the officer was there. Some of them moved, but they only went like two blocks down, and they start parking down there. So, all, you know, if you do that, it would probably solve a lot of problems, there would be room for everybody to come and to our town and visit us. It's already bad enough where State Farm, now that, you know, we're open to the city, number, you know, we're all open now, State Farm don't have a place for their customers. The I guy's been there for 20 years, he has no place for his customers. I mean, I know my landlord is selling the building, I told him the other day, "I'm happy," because I'm leaving too, because I can't, there's no place to park, I said, "I'm glad you're leaving." I mean, I've been here 26 years, I love this place. But then, I thought, okay, after, not to jump story, okay, after the parking, if you just chase them back there, then have their bot, write a letter to the building, and tell them to put a note in their checks. Okay, you park on Western, one more time, Blue Island is going to issue tickets, and then you can start enforcing the tickets. And then, there'll be room for everybody. Um, I mean, it's sad, because I go down to where the parking lot is, it's empty. And it's sad, because Pub Time and the restaurant, they had to give up their parking, and now they don't have no place for their rest, their people, so they're losing money too. And you don't want them to leave the town like everybody else, just because the nurses don't want to park where they're supposed to, it's only them. I watched, I sat in my bedroom, I watch out, they come out of the building, two nurses come out, it's the end of their day, and, um, thinking that, "Oh, hey, let's walk down together." Nope, the other one said, "Oh, see ya, I park right here." Another one comes out, same thing, "No, I parked over here." And then that's eight hours. So, that's, I'm like, I'm hoping you guys decide to hurry up and fix it before the whole town decides to leave, because I know, I got to the end of the year.
Oh, thank you, that's something that...
And, okay, not to, I know, Fran, I understand you took over the city stickers. I've been fighting with the gentleman before, that, um, my ex-husband, he comes here and purchases a city sticker with my address, and he lives in Chicago. I told the man, "Please, can you just stop it, put his little name up there, when his name come, say sorry, we can't." They said, "No, if you can show proof that you live here, okay." But, what about if it was expired? I mean, I know everybody's in a hurry, and they don't, you know, look at details, but I mean, it's sort of sad that, you know, he could come here and, I don't want the reputation of like, "Oh, you can come blind, you can do what you want." Because the nurses do what they want, anybody could come here and buy a sticker. And then, I'm just hoping that, I understand that we're short staff, and the stickers are bought online, so there it goes again, where you don't have to show proof. Now, what about if the nurses live on one street? "Hey, hey, I know you live over in Blue Island, can you buy me a sticker, put my car on your house?" Who's to say they won't do that? Just so they can park on a stupid street, so they don't have to walk. I mean, I don't know, I just wanted to open your eyes, look at different things that people are going to do, just so they can get away with it.
No, thank you, the parking situation, we're aware of, we're trying to figure out ways to work around that, and the city sticker situation are supposed to be tied to the Secretary of State's active registry, but I'm sure the clerk's taking notes, so, thank you.
Okay, well, it's okay, I mean, I'm hoping someday they'll fix it. And I want to thank my Alderman for, he did, um, fight like before, just to get the permanent parking for the houses. I understand from the alley, you guys haven't decided what to do yet, which is only fair because you have all the businesses, they don't have a place to park if you start putting permanent for everybody. But, thank you, Bill, for fighting.
Thank you.
Can you call me tomorrow? You call me tomorrow, give me that information again about the stickers.
Thank you, I even went to Chicago, and I said, "Will you please stop this guy?" They said, "Sorry, we have better things to do."
Call me tomorrow.
I know that.
I'm there, usually by 7:30 in the morning, mid-pow tomorrow.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'll be brief here, I don't want to take too much time, because we have a lot of business to get through here at the City Hall. Congrats to all the new City Council members, your honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and, uh, you know, I was reading scripture this morning, it says, Matthew 12:22, it says, "A house divided cannot stand." We gotta work together, people, can, you know, put whatever together, we're, you know, doing what's best for the city. My name is Tomas Madrigal, that's my Alderman, I live at 13427 Mozart, I've been there about 22 years, I'm kind of the honorary, actually, I should be official of, uh, preaching captain, because I walk, I'm, I gotta say this slow, retired, not retarded, retired, and I walk around the Barrio neighborhood, and I talk to a lot of people, and I, you know, I say, "How's things going on here, you know, blah, blah, blah?" And one of my concerns is, a lot of, a lot of the speeders going down from Francisco to railroad tracks, going west, going from Francisco to railroad tracks, going eastbound, a lot of, you know, there's that one store there, I got that one store, a lot of kids from the trailer court cross here, and I see a lot of people, a lot of traffic going fast, they're going 50, 60 miles an hour. I don't know if they could get a police officer over there, but I don't want nobody to get hurt, that's why I hear from a lot of my, uh, the neighbors down Broadbury Street, "Thomas, I've got to go to the gente de la ciudad, talk to the people in the city." And also, too, just a little thunder from this one lady here. Where I live at, there's a lot of people, a lot of cars, a lot of cars, and they tell me, Spanish, English, "Hey, Thomas, how come I gotta get a city sticker, and the other people don't? There's all kind of truck, people truck their, whatever, business trucks, they have no city sticker." And hopefully, something can be done, because that's not, you know, they say, "Tom, why should I get a city sticker, these other, people don't, why should I?" But, like, that's some of the issues, and I'm glad the City Council's open, thank the Lord. And, uh, one more thing is, oh yeah, a lot of my neighbors, they play their music loud lots of times on weekends, I don't know what the ordinance and so forth, I have to call the cops, I tell neighbors, "Please, call the police," so I hate to be the one that always called the police, but, you know, that's my issues today, and thank you much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Carol DePace Green. It's time to deliver. Oh, by the way, congratulations to all of you, got a lot of hard work ahead of you, good luck, but it's time to deliver. Our Blue Island elected officials have not and are not working in the people's best interest. As the City of Blue Island has too much at stake, special meetings minimally need to be audio recorded to comply with Open Meetings Act transparency laws. Regular meetings should be broadcast live and have not been since May 1st. It's been clearly stated, the City Council cannot legally move money or create new positions, and the City Council and corporate authority cannot simply change the 2021 appropriation without substantial new money, that's already been established. Changing the City of Blue Island's former government can be accomplished by referendum. You can't, you can't change the city's former government just because you feel like it. Committees have been eliminated, and they shouldn't have been. You now have liaisons, and most importantly, judiciary was completely omitted. The most important committee was absolutely, completely omitted. We're not seeing any robust, serious plan to fix Blue Island, and it goes without saying, residents in wards outside of the second and third ward do not want shitty sidewalks and streets. The same way it was illegal for Domingo to create positions, it's also illegal for you to create positions. And whereas eight years ago, people didn't know any better, now they do. Mark and Tom may be the people you trust, but these are people who've cost the taxpayers money, substantial money. For Mark, more than a million dollars were jowled. It's fine if he, if it wasn't taxpayer money, if it was his own money that he made a mistake with, that would be fine. If Tom made a mistake with his own money at the, uh, Chicago State University, it would be fine, but it's taxpayers paying for these mistakes, not them personally. Blue Island does not have a city manager former government. Blue Island is a city with a weak mayor, an Alderman former government, and Blue Island is not a mayor, manager, former government, we're not a village or a board. Because administrator and deputy administrative positions were not appropriated for, there's no money for these positions. I forea requested a copy of the City of Blue Island Charter from the city clerk, and the city attorney, Montana Welsh, responded that those doc, that document can't be located. There's no way that the City of Blue Island could not have been incorporated, could not have a charter, it has to exist, a copy has to be with Cook County or the state of Illinois. You can't function without it. It's not appropriate and it's not allowable to silence, bully, or dismiss the views of Blue Island taxpayers, residents, or the public. City-owned property 2741 Orchard Street needs to be maintained and restored. Restoration is likely going to cost upwards of a million dollars. Blue Island needs a mayor that's available on Memorial Day for gun violence prevention, Flag Day, Juneteenth, holidays, significant other days, along with weekends. Since the transition, there was no alert for the storm Sunday night. All of Blue Island sirens are not working. There's been no continuity of care with the Blue Island COVID response team. The Meadows is open, however, the netting that you talked about before, the end of the last City Council, has not been installed, and there's been no talk about it since. Blue Island is self-insured, if somebody gets hurt, it's a lawsuit. The same thing with our market day, or farmer's market. I forea requested how many entities have business licenses or, um, vendor's licenses and have been inspected? We don't have an answer yet, but the city, again, is self-insured. If something goes wrong, guess who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers, who've been paying for all the mistakes. I, uh, it is necessary to have the uncomfortable conversations and stand in the gap for Blue Islanders, taxpayers, and the public, who want to see a real concerted effort to get things done and done right. The democracy of our city, of Blue Island, is under attack at this point. We're not, if, if you're not truly invested in getting things done and doing them properly, please, find another line of work, because all we've heard about is positions, 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 and nothing to fix, fix, fix the current mess. It's unfair to the taxpayers. You're more than a month in. I mean, what you should be talking about is what the taxpayers want to hear about, the streets, the alleys, what you're going to do about these things. And so far, all we've heard about is, "We gotta find money, so we can go ahead and appoint Tom and Mark." No, those aren't the things we gotta do, those are the things you want to do, the things you gotta, gotta do is take care of the taxpayers, take care of these streets. You promised to seriously fix Blue Island. I don't see anything that's serious going on yet, but me, like everybody else, I'm waiting. And people are not happy with what they see. So, enough with the positions, get onto the real meat and potatoes, get these streets repaired and fixed, get that property next door to me, uh, cut. You know, when I hear from Public Works, "Oh, we're going to cut it maybe two or three times a year." Well, if you cut your vegetation two or three times a year, you're probably going to get a property maintenance violation. Why should the city be treated differently? Why do I have to put up with vegetation that's two feet high? It's not fair, and it's inappropriate. Thank you for listening, and I did email you, uh, Mayor Fred, and tell you, you could call me, text me, email me, any kind of response. I'm still waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
How's everyone doing?
How you doing?
Great, uh, yeah, um, Fourth of July's coming up in a couple weeks or so, I feel that the people that, uh, will participate in fireworks, you know, last year was crazy, there was that empty lot on 123rd and Western, uh, we talked about, I think Frank and Fred last, uh, last year, and, uh, a lot of people come from the city, park their cars there, blow off fireworks, it's like, uh, it's out of control, so I feel that coming up again this Fourth of July, I think it's going to be worse. I'm on 2400 block of Boonlaw, that's where I'm at, and they have neighbors that moved in a year ago, they were quiet, quiet as a church mouse, but come the weekend, every other weekend, they want to partake in parties and alcohol, and there was a mess left over behind, and I told them before, "Call the cops next time," you know, "Okay, okay." That's all they say, is "Okay." They go back in the house, and they hide. Two weeks, two or three weeks later, they'll come out and participate in the backyard. I think the owners of these buildings that people participate with parties, and people come from all over parts of town, I think that's out of control too, so. And my mom's in the hospital now, and she's been diagnosed with, uh, sleep apnea. It's only a few feet away, plenty of old houses are close together in Blue Island, so people don't have courtesy or respect for their neighbors, especially when it's not their building or ownership of a house or property, where they rent, and they feel that that's their right, because they're paying a rent, that, that they feel like they own the property of the house. And, uh, three weeks ago, they had a bouncy house, it was huge, and it was on, it was on my neighbor's side of this bias fence, but it was touching the wires, and they got a big tree, and it's hard to get a hold of tenant, the owner of the building was Rosa, and her husband, they, I think they live in Tinley, but they barely come out to take care of the property, and there's a big tree, that tree's probably been here since Columbus came here, you know, it's a big, giant tree, this past storm, that tree was going back and forth, it's going to land on the garage, I know, I know, so, I mean, it's just a huge tree, and if one of them, somebody from the city, can take a look at that tree, it's a huge tree, and big trees soak up a lot of water, it gets saturated, the ground gets, last year, we had a lot of rain, where the ground got oversaturated, so that becomes, you know, the soil becomes mushy, and give away the roots, you know, to give away, so that, that's my concern right here, and I just feel that, I'm from a different generation, I grew up here in Blue Island, I'm from a different generation, I grew up where I respected my neighbors and courtesy, I helped all my neighbors, these, these people today, they come from all parts of the county, and they either moved here, and they don't want to leave, and it's not the same, so I'm, I'm asking you, Councilman Mayor, Councilman, if we can really observe this, and focus on the people that live in Blue Island, and who invite other people, and just monitor the behavior, their attitudes, so, that's all I got to say right now.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we have old business, if we don't need to remove from table, we can skip on to number seven, unless somebody wants to remove from table. All right, we skipped down to number seven, the consent agenda, we have the handicap ordinances, and I think that's everything, just the handicap ordinances, if there's a motion to approve all three, motion by Alderman Fairwell is her second, Alderman Rol on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rida, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, reported city officials. All right, first, I'd like to begin with a moment of silence, we lost two officers, one with direct ties to Blue Island, Richard Castellana, retired Cook County Sheriff, he was killed in Gary, Indiana, and his family's still born and raised here, his mother still lives here on Vermont Street, and we also have retired officer James Base, um, I think a lifelong resident of Blue Island, definitely a career Blue Island police officer, lived on Greenwood here, he just recently passed away, so I'd ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. So, under mayoral comments, I have a workman's comp issue, we're starting to begin, as previously discussed, the city urgently needs a third-party administrator to address workman's comp cases, staff is in the process of getting bids to bring to the next council meeting, I think one came in today, and then they'll work with the finance liaison to bring that stuff to the next committee of the whole. Montana Welch is in a position to cover this need in the short term, but in the long run, we need to get a qualified TPA who can properly adjust these claims. We're looking at a likely annual cost of approximately $25,000, when compared to the money we can save the city by having properly administered and adjusted the claims, we think it'll be well worth it. Under the Building Department, as you know, the previous building official abruptly quit last week, leaving a very large need in our staff, Howard Capari has taken on being down in the office every single day, working through the kinks and getting permits processed, working through a backlog of permits, and trying to calm down the multiple people and contractors coming in and trying to address the concerns. There's a lot of issues in that department, positions have been posted for building commissioner and inspector, and part-time inspector, and administrative assistant, interviews will start shortly, we only had a few applications so far, but a couple of Blue Island residents in there, so it's, it's promising, at least a start, and hopefully, we'll start the interviews by the end of the week. I met with the Realtor Association with Alderman McGee this morning, they have a lot of the same concerns we all do as Aldermen with the Building Department, and I think going forward, we'd all be on the same page, they address the same stuff that we've already talked about needs to be addressed. Uh, code enforcement, as promised, we are re-engaging with the code enforcement citywide, I've personally accompanied the code enforcement officer over the past couple days, even last week, and written over 100 code violations along Western Avenue, and two of the wards so far, I'm jumping in the car with, but they're doing citywide stuff, and, um, I know that public comment addressed some of the code enforcement stuff. We need to be consistent more than anything, we're going to be ticketing for grass, ticketing for signage, or ticketing for debris, it's got to be consistent, um, that's one of the biggest issues we had in the past, it was lack of consistency throughout the department and throughout the city. So, I've even ticketed some of my good friends on Old Western Avenue, because they have vegetation two, three feet tall, so I have no problems with those things being addressed, and we can waive things when it comes to the hearing adjudication courts, but we have to be consistent across the board. So, we're going to be a city that enforces the codes across the board consistently, and that brings me to city stickers, which also is addressed during public comment. Police will be issuing tickets for the city sticker violations in the month of July, I believe after July 15th. We will ticket every vehicle registered to Blue Island that doesn't have a sticker. We are working with Secretary of State's office to get an up-to-date listing, I think they already have it, and we're going to process them consistently across the board, and the chief is going to already roll out doing every section of the city. Hopefully, by doing that, we might look into if we need to continue the revenue sources of the fee structures we have in the future, however, that's one of the issues we have in the past, is lack of consistency enforcing the city stickers. Fireworks, I talked to the chief, we've, I know they're out there ticketing, so I'm getting complaints from my own neighbors that they receive tickets for fireworks, so I'm glad that they're doing that, and I think we need to consistently continue to do that. So, fireworks are illegal, for the most part, most fireworks are illegal in the state of Illinois, so, and I know last year, probably because of COVID, it was way out of hand, so this year, we're trying to crack down, I know the police officers, like I said, by constituents calling me complaining, "Why'd I get a ticket for fireworks?" I know they're out there doing it, so if you hear something, it's a consistent issue, where they're actively doing it, please call the emergency, not emergency, or the police department, and they'll come out and issue a ticket. or the police department and they'll come out and issue a ticket. I'm looking forward to seeing everybody on Saturday's Blue Island Fourth of July celebration. Starts at four o'clock, fireworks will be around eight-thirty. I know it kinda sounds, uh, ironic, we're talking about fireworks and enforcement, but the city is allowed to with proper permits and fire department and the fire marshal being involved. But we're having our event at the Sepa Station or the Waterfall Park at Fulton and Irving this Saturday. So hope to see you there. There'll be some food vendors and some local Blue Island, um, craft vendors. And, um, hopefully, it'll be a good, nice clear evening. I'd like to congratulate Mark Pataska and the Pataska family. They, uh, received their second child on Sunday, so he received a Father's Day gift. So he'll be in and out. He actually came in a few times already, even after the baby. So it shows you his dedication to his job and I just wanna congratulate them on the healthy boy that came on Sunday. I also want to, uh, present, along with the chief, the Blue Island Police Department received accommodation for Lexipol for Excellence in Law Enforcement Policy Management. I don't know if the chief wants to give a brief description of what this is, 'cause I'll probably stumble through it.
Sure. So Lexipol, we contracted out, almost as right, our department policies. There are, uh, law base and that any, uh, changes in the law will be amended, uh, policies. Additionally, that gives daily training, so every officer is, uh, given, uh, constant updates and reminded to, uh, to engage your understanding and, you know.
Can you come up to the mic?
Not today.
Can you use, uh, Dexter's? Yeah, I wasn't gonna bring attention to that.
So, yeah, yeah, I failed there. So every officer is, um, provided with updates to current laws, changes to laws, and they're then tested and gain knowledge and understanding. And it helps every officer, it helps the department to better serve the community. So, um, it's presented to the department and it's, it's just so because, uh, it takes every member of the department to really come together and make this a great city. So, uh, thank you.
Chief, stay there. I don't want you walking twice. We're gonna jump to the police attorney and the agenda. Officer Miles O'Brien.
Raise your hand. Aye, Miles O'Brien.
Aye, Miles O'Brien.
I'm gonna be appointed a police patrol officer. In the city of Blue Island, in the city of Blue Island, in the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
U.S.A.L.D., swear. U.S.A.L.D., swear. That I will support the Constitution of the States.
That I will support the Constitution of the States.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of patrol officer.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of patrol officer.
According to the best and greatest, according to the best and greatest. Thank you. You're welcome.
Fun to unfollow right now. Congratulations. All right, since we did the police, we can go right into the fire. We have two, uh, firemen being sworn in tonight. We'll start, well, I can do them individually. We'll do them individually. So we have Bradley Bentley first. Oh, Bradley, Bradley.
Hi, Bradley.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter. In the city of Blue Island, county of Cook. State of Illinois.
U.S.A.L.D., swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of State of Illinois. Now, faithfully discharge the duties of the office of, in the fire department in the city of Blue Island. Office of fire department.
Office of fire department.
In the city of Blue Island. County of Cook. State of Illinois. Best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have George Ramos.
Hi, George Ramos.
Hi, George Ramos.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter. In the city of Blue Island. County of Cook. State of Illinois. U.S.A.L.D., swear. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution of State of Illinois. That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Fireman. In the city of Blue Island. In the city of Blue Island. County of Cook. State of Illinois. Best of my ability. Congratulations.
I'll just announce, um, 'cause I'm gonna give a quick recess to allow if any family wants to leave. We do offer a residency stipend for moving to Blue Island and purchasing a house. I just wanna offer that as a salesman of the city. So just look into that. It's a salary stipend. Thank you, we'll take a minute. That's what we want. We wanna do work. Alderman Johnson joined the meeting. I didn't wanna pull it out at the beginning, but we got a record present. I saw you hiding in the back there.
I got caught by one of the blew out of the train.
Mm-hmm. All right, we'll continue on. So we have a motion for approval of payroll and the gross amount of $309,249.10. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Montoya, is there a second? Alderman, roll on the question.
I just, uh, wanna make a note, um, we did a demo discussion last time about where the money was coming from for the administrator and the deputy administrator. We didn't really resolve it. I'd like to get that resolved, uh, and, uh, you know, vote for these paychecks. By the next time, I'd like to maybe have a, a written statement about how that's gonna work. Did we find out which, uh, contingency we?
All right. I know Mark was gonna get the numbers, but then he had the baby, so.
I understand, yeah.
I know it was coming out of one of the contingency funds.
Okay.
So, unless Tom, do you have it? I know Mark was looking into it.
Yeah.
Okay. We will get that, Alderman. Any other questions? If not, I asked Clerk Barocall.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have motion for approval of accounts payable for the amount of $257,018.67 for June 23rd, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion, Alderman, roll, is there a second? Alderman Montoya on the question. Alderman Fernwald.
Um, I wrote a, a note to Mark today, wasn't thinking about what he was doing, so I'm sure he'll give me an answer. And I'm not gonna go through all the questions, but, uh, and Mr. Mayor, I, I absolutely understand that you wanted to get things done with the city here and there are things that need to be done. Uh, so I just asked him kind of for some information about how those expenses were authorized and, um, and I'm sure he'll answer that. And just wanna note, again, understood what you were needing to accomplish, but just to reemphasize that as we go forward, we'd like these things to go through the normal committee process.
No, um, are you speaking of, uh, carpeting?
Carpeting, uh, is there some cleaning?
Yeah, that was like my first day on where the clerks was breathing in some bad stuff down there and there was tears and rips everywhere. And for the amount that we got done, I think it was less than 80 cents a square foot.
No, I'm not complaining.
Yeah. And, uh, no, that, that was something I wanted to get done before we moved anything around. So, but, um, no, nothing else. Committee of the whole, we're gonna hash it all out.
Okay.
I think there's actually a line item, though. I did ask that. There's a line item of $30,000 for routine building maintenance.
Okay.
Also, the flooring, uh, buffing and waxing came out of that too.
All right, thank you.
Alderman, do you wanna go through your concerns with Mark, 'cause Mark and I weren't able to talk about it.
Um, if he can just answer either by email, I gave an email.
I can answer you now if you want.
Oh, that's fine, go, yeah, absolutely, go right, yeah, sure. No, yeah.
So, uh, so what, you had some specific questions about a couple of, uh?
Right, I had, there were four items, actually, I'm sorry, three items, Alpha Omega Carpets.
Right.
Furman, who's that, uh, Janitorial, and Marina Lopez, uh, so.
For the record, Thomas Wilken, city administrator, um, you talked about the carpet, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Lopez was, uh, the former custodian that was hired during COVID after Blue Cap had, uh, suspended services during COVID. So we opted to bring, uh, Blue Cap back. So, uh, Lopez was only coming one day a week. And now that we have a few more people populating the offices, garbage cans getting in filled our first couple of days, we realized we needed, um, you know, at least three to five-day custodian service, basic stuff, emptying garbage, dusting, et cetera, vacuuming. So this is the last payment. There may be one more. We terminated when we brought Blue Cap back. Yeah. This will be, this, and this will be replaced by, uh, uh, an invoice to, to Blue Cap, uh, for more, more consistent custody services. I believe Blue Cap's several hundred cheaper per service.
Can I say something about, um, they were coming in one day a week? So if I would throw a banana in my garbage can, it would sit there till Friday. So we had a concern, and Blue Cap was called, all of us wanted to come back. And then right now, they're back and they're doing a fantastic job.
That's great.
With the COVID net, they're even cleaning the bathrooms. The bathrooms were not being cleaned before.
I believe they're cheaper too. I'm trying to find it, but they didn't bill us yet. I think they said they were gonna be a little cheaper.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
They were doing it for, yeah, years.
They love it, they love it.
Yeah, we got some of the same people back too.
In the morning and there, there's a 10, they love it.
Um, the, when he started, I'm probably mispronouncing it, but you had a question about one, one specific one. That is, uh, that was the floor refurbishing service, so that's the, that's this floor here.
Right.
And then also the clerk's office. Every tiled surface in the city, so clerk's office, bathroom, second floor, city hall, all the first floor, east annex, any tile on the second floor. There's a lot of.
I have, my cops will give you, I have pictures before and after.
They stripped all the sound and all the tiled surfaces. So again, one-time cost based on the information that's coming in. Capers is a law enforcement-based software.
Oh, okay.
Chief, I don't know, especially you wanna, uh, just?
I, for some reason, I didn't recognize the name, but now I get it. Thank you.
Um, there was a question about, uh, South Suburban Managers Association. So I, so first off, we were not paying dues into there, which denies you a lot of access to the resources they provide. Um, I, I would just couch this right now, Alderman, in something I think you just referenced, which is the need for a broader conversation about how this appropriation matches what the actual governance of the city is. And I think this is a fairly prime example. To answer your question, it's not properly appropriated in there.
All right.
At this moment.
Okay.
Um, and then you had a contract, a question about a contract employee.
Yeah.
So that is currently what the only person who really can, we can say is a payroll clerk at this point. Um, so, so she comes in about two, two and a half days a week and it's really just the function of getting payroll out. So that's her, that's her role and responsibility. I, I, we, I, I can go to a little bit of history, but it's secondhand. Uh, my understanding is she was initially hired through a temp agency by Topeka and then was retained in some fashion after that. And we have some HR questions we need to get.
Payroll expense, it doesn't mean it's her payroll.
It means she's the payroll clerk, or at least she's, she's filling the duties of the payroll clerk right now. So, yes, correct.
Okay.
Um, and this, I think, will be something that's part of a broader staffing conversation moving forward.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if I missed anything, but that's, that's what.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, clerk, please do the.
And I just, let me just note, I did, and again, I did, forgot that Mark wasn't in. But I submitted that to him so we didn't, wouldn't have.
No, I understand. And that's where, that's where it proves that having two of them where one can't be here, the other one knows what the other one's doing. We want consistency. We, we all lived through, well, at least me and you have lived through the previous city administrator or whatever, and he was gone for multiple, and then we didn't know what we were doing. We were driving a ship with no information. I'm not trying to have any babies either.
When I was sleeping at 5:30, Mark was walking in the building at 5:30 today.
I know, he's been here and he should be at home, but he's been here.
All right, Alderman Johnson.
Uh, no.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Louis.
I said aye.
Oh, I can see, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Four ayes, one no.
Am I allowed to vote, otherwise the accounts payable fail? I'm allowed to vote, aye. Alderman Johnson.
Bye-bye.
Yes, mayor.
We'll talk. I wanna get your yes votes on some municipal stuff like this, otherwise we're gonna be in danger of not having forums and not proving anything.
I just wanna address why I say no.
Yeah. I know.
For the new folks that don't know, I've been asking for an audit, a forensic audit at that, since I paid the term. It's a very long time.
All right, um, we gotta live with the, the smaller council and this is one of the things. Going forward, actually, I think we need to talk about vacations and stuff like that, 'cause I hate to have a meeting with no forum. And I think it's something we can all talk at the committee of the whole going forward or something like that. So, it's not hard calling special meetings. Police Pension Board Commissioners, I'm gonna try to do one in a meeting if I can find people by then. So the police board, they, they don't have forum now because they're missing two people on the board. So, um, I'm appointing James Johansson, who formerly served in that board, so he has all the certification. And I'm appointing Dr. Wayne Wolf, a retired police officer, both Blue Island residents, both with experience in the police and pension. I've already discussed it with the chief, he agrees. And I don't think I need ratification, but.
That's correct. It's a right-to-Louis statute that it's not something the city council lets consent to, so it's more.
But I don't think there's any issue with the people I appointed, unless there is, but you can let me know. But one previously served for many years and the other one is a retired police officer. So, that way they can start having meetings again. Proclamation regarding Juneteenth Day. I have a proclamation here. Alderman Johnson brought it up at the last committee of the whole. Proclamation, Juneteenth, annually on the 19th of June. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston, Texas, and spread the word that slavery has been abolished approximately two years prior by Abraham Lincoln. And whereas the celebration of June 19th was coined "Juneteenth" as a celebration for reassuring each other, for praying, for recounting the past, and for some annual pilgrimage back to Galveston for that date. And whereas Juneteenth, or Juneteenth Independence Day commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and is observed annually on June 19th. And whereas Juneteenth today celebrates black freedom and achievement as it takes a more national, symbolic, and even global perspective, the events of 1865 in Texas are not forgotten for all roots tied back to that fertile soil from which a national day of pride is growing. And be a result, the city of Blue Island supports the celebration of Juneteenth from this day forward and extends greetings and best wish to all those observing June 19th, June 19th, as Juneteenth Day. Now therefore, I, Fred Bellato, Mayor of the City of Blue Island, and Blue Island City Alderman, do hereby proclaim the city of Blue Island shall recognize June 19th, 2021, and each year thereafter on 19th of June as Juneteenth Day. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Fernwald, any question? Clerk, take the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have Rose.
Yes. Can I just, I was gonna just make a quick comment. I just want to, again, thank Alderman Johnson for making this happen and, um, say that I just think this is an incredibly important holiday that deserved long ago to be recognized and I'm really proud that we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution, number seven, resolution 2021-18, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, establishing seven operational areas within the. County, Illinois, establishing seven operational areas within the city, and appointing Alderman as liaisons to each operational area. This was discussed and approved at committee of the whole. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Farinwall, second by Alderman Rolle, on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. And just like I know Alderman Johnson mentioned to me, if there is issues where you think you would fit a better role, I'm sure we can amend this as needed. If you feel like you're strongly in one situation or want to move into another, I have no issue with bringing that up again, I just wanted to put it out there. If you want to do it annually or if something comes up, I know Alderman Johnson, Alderman Montoya, asked me about possibly switching, but to me, I've already notified at our staff meeting this week, and I'm sure some of you have already been talking to department leaders to reach out to their liaisons, to work with them, and hopefully we'll have a, moving forward next committee of the whole, some information to start off with. So I know Alderman Farinwall, I think Jim was going to reach out to you, I know Alderman Rolle's already been in contact with the administrators. There's some stuff at the fire department, police department that Alderman McGee is going to be involved in, so we're going to move forward with this. All right, next we have number eight, resolution 2021-19, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving an extension of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Blue Island and the Blue Island Historical Society. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman McGee, is there a second? Alderman Johnson, on the question. Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries, number nine, we have resolution 2021-20, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving the salary increases for part-time police officers. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Rolle, second by Alderman McGee, is there a question? Alderman Farinwall.
Yeah, the city attorney acknowledged this earlier, that, that there's been a replacement of language, replacing, I think it was mayor and Alderman comprising city council, we now have language mayor and city Alderman. It really is mayor and city council. And I guess I would like to move to amend this, to reflect that language.
So, again, based on the conversation we've had many times, the statutory language itself defines what city council is, and city council shall consist of a mayor and Alderman.
That is not correct.
65 LCS 5.140-5.
That's the corporate authority.
The corporate authority is defined in 65 LCS 5.1-1-2, as meaning the mayor and the Alderman are similar bodies. They mean the same thing, they're defined the same way in the statute. It's statutory construction, that's exactly what it says, how I read it. I don't think it's being interpreted wrong, you know, you have the right to believe what you believe, that you stated it.
Well, it's not just what I believe. I've talked with our legislative council, and he's pretty firm on this one.
We don't have legislative council.
We do. I've moved to amend this. If there's no motion to second, then we'll move on.
Motion to amend by Alderman Farinwall, second by Alderman McGee. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Four ayes, one no.
So then, just to be clear, your amendment is that this resolution, instead of stating in many sections, be mayor and city Alderman.
Mm-hmm. It would say mayor and city council.
Okay.
All right, clerk, please take the roll. We did that already, so we're back to the original motion. Motion was made in second, and does, do we have roll call, or do we do another motion and second?
Do, do another motion.
Another motion and second to approve the amended, is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Farinwall, is there a second? Alderman McGee, any questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
What was it?
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
There's four ayes.
Four ayes, I couldn't hear, is that Montoya?
It's the amended motion.
Right, and so, four ayes, because it's amended, motion for a resolution to spend money would require five votes.
Oh, there you go.
So the motion to approve the amended resolution fails.
That's unfortunate.
So, this motion fails to increase the part-time pay for police officers, is there any way to reconsider?
Let me think, let me think about it for a second.
We can come back to it?
Yes.
Let's come back to this. All right, number 10, resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving funding for retention of public works employees, is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman Rolle, on the question. Clerk, please take the roll.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I've got the same issue here with virtually every single thing beyond this point. But let me think about this.
So this would be working with, with Alderman.
Right, it should be the mayor and city council, in my opinion, rather than mayor and city Alderman.
And in my legal opinion, that's not correct, and may create liability to the city.
I don't want to hold up the whole works for the city right now. I guess what I would be willing to say for the moment, and we can go back and reconsider this item, is I want my objection noted.
Noted in the comments for the minutes of the meeting. All right, let's do number 10, and we'll go back to number nine.
All right.
All right, so this is a roll call for, we didn't amend this one, so it's regular roll call, yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Please make note in the comments section for the Alderman's objections. All right, back to number nine, we have resolution 2021-20, so I need a motion to reconsider approving the unamended motion. Is there a motion by Alderman Farinwall? Is there a second? Alderman Rolle, on the question. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries, under city clerk, city clerk's announcements.
Yeah. I just want to make an announcement, that there's going to be, well, obviously, the mayor told us about the fireworks. There's also going to be filming Lion Gate TV series, The Force, will be inside Metro South on June 30. They're going to need one day, they're going to be filming everything inside, so they don't really need anything, but except for on June 30, they're going to be parking their vehicles on Irving Street, and I believe Chief Carr is already aware and is working with them on that. So that is June 30, they're filming The Force.
They're not requesting any city services, right?
No, they're, they're, they're already working with Chief Carr.
I'm sure, where are they filming?
National Night Out is going to be August 3. If anybody would like to help, please contact myself or Lori Salgado, August 3 is National Night Out.
Alderman Farinwall had a question, where they were filmed.
Where are they filming?
Inside Metro, fill Metro South.
Yes, okay.
Inside, there's going to be the streets, on Irving Street.
I think they were there before.
I don't, might be a different one. And I also have the up-to-date, get the stickers, announce, including the dog stickers, the dog sticker.
I think we only have eight dogs in Blue Island.
Yeah.
I talked to the previous city clerk on this.
Mine, please.
I just find humor in the old-school style of dog tags in town here. They look identical for the last like 30 years. I love them. Anything else, clerk?
Um...
How the sales going, though, increased?
Um, we're, we're ahead like 600 the other day, and now we're slowing down, it's really busy. Also, if anyone is interested in dog days, they'll be coming pretty soon. If you contact Jackie Murphy at Three Sisters, she's going to be working on, we can ask for dog days.
All right. City Treasurers Report, is there a mo, do we have one?
We have one.
Do we have one?
I think that's just possible.
No, okay. All right, city attorney, we have an ordinance, oh, go ahead, city attorney.
Ordinance 2021-15, an ordinance amending chapter 115 of the Code of Blue Island, moving through dealers of the code. This is relating to the outdoor seating that we discussed in the committee of the whole meeting.
Is there a motion? Alderman McGee, is there a second? Alderman Montoya, on the question. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next is ordinance 2021-19, amending the zoning code of Blue Island in regard to improve impervious surface coverage. Again, this is discussed in the committee of the whole.
Now, is there a motion? Motion by Alderman McGee, is there a second? Second by Alderman Rolle, on the question. Alderman McGee. We, the missing impervious, about the existing properties being grandfathered, as we discussed earlier. Yeah, I was asked at the zoning, and I was told it was in there. If it's not, I have no problem with amending, first, let's find out if it's not, now we can amend it right now, and put that it's grandfathering in. I thought it was, I was told it was, so. So basically, Alderman McGee brought up an issue this morning's meeting that we're not making people tear stuff down that exists already, which I asked that question, I was told we're not. So if it doesn't say that in there, let's, let's put it in there.
Let me just check.
Now we have to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, we will, let's find out if it's in there or not first. Well, we can do it just to be safe.
Yeah, I don't see it in there. We did attach the zoning board of appeals findings of fact, which we adopted as part of the ordinance, so I'm just checking that really quickly to see if it's in there.
No, I just see what she's saying, the finding of fact are referenced here.
And I actually have another question. How was that 62% in terms?
So, total lot size by impervious structures on the lot, so house, roof, impervious patio, not, not pavers. Like I said, I did my own, and I was surprised, I thought it'd be over 60%, and I'm right there right now. And I, my yard is tiny, I mean, I also have bungal, I think my yard is probably 20 by 10, you know, and I'm at that 60% still. So I think it was, it's in the higher end of what other towns have done, some have been as conservative as 30 and 40%, but they have bigger lots than us.
That's around 60%.
We went 60%, however, any scenario, we'll go to zoning board to...
65 or 65.
But in any scenario, we'll go to zoning board, and they can amend it, they can have variance. But I'd say make a motion to amend it, just be safe, we can't find out.
Yes, so what I have, pardon me, doesn't mention it, however, there could be something that currently exists in the code, because this is just adding to the code, but if we want to be safe, we could just amend this to ensure...
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Motion to amend to include, for lack of a better legal term, grandfathered properties that might be exceeding 60%.
So just, just to be clear on that, then, any grandfathered properties that exist, no matter whether they come up for, you know, some kind of other property sale, whatever, whatever, they do not have to comply with that rule?
No, only if they're going to increase it.
If they're going to, right.
Yes, so if they're already at 65%, we're not going to say you got to tear down 5% of the impervious.
Okay.
I understand, and this is the same question I had, because I have a property owner in town, too, and I might have some that are over 60%. I had the same concern, Alderman McGee brought forward this morning, Howard assured that was, that was covered in there, but we'll add it in. So there's a motion, is there a second for the amended? I don't remember if we did a second. Second by Alderman Rolle, on the question. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries, number three, we have resolution 2021-22, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, author, I'm sorry, I took it, maybe we can, I'll roll with it. Amendment to the agreement for automated teller machine services at the Mendels of Blue Island Golf Course. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Roll on the question. Roll, clerk, take the roll, please.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Five ayes, John.
All right, the next resolution is 2021-23, to authorize and approve agreement for information technology security upgrades.
Is there a motion? Motion by McGee, Alderman for a second, Alderman Farnwell, on the roll, I mean on the question.
Got a question.
Alderman Roll.
We had discussed the nature of the contract for the spam filtering to make sure it had an escape clause if we decided we wanted to change our mail hosting.
I remember that. Mr. Wogan, do we have that in there?
So I did have a chance. Mr. Holic was not able to be here today. He had less of a concern about the spam filter being able to be easily incorporated with, you know, should we make the changes to cloud that we want to. That said, I think maybe it's worthy of another discussion. You know, it's a highly technical, you know, endeavor that we're doing, that we're talking about doing there, so I think we may want to talk about timeframe. And he did agree with your assessment, Alderman, that the, that the ransomware protection was the priority of the two. I can't tell you from a staff standpoint, we are getting spam, but that it is not, does not present the most immediate threat in terms of that. So, and the, essentially, the quote that we have on the two services can be decoupled, physically.
Great, thank you.
So, and they're willing to. So what I, what I would suggest maybe doing is, I think we should move on the ransomware part of this, which is the 1500 and 600, whatever it is. As for the spam filtering, I can go back to paradigm and talk about what we can shop around for, for a shorter, a shorter term.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we need to amend this or are we, is there two separate things part of this agreement?
It's one, probably amend it because it's one code and two services.
All right, so then we need a motion to amend to only accept the ransomware. Is that the one we're accepting?
So you would want a motion to amend to accept the Proofpoint BlackBerry licenses portion of the arrangement, which is page five. And we would be holding on page three, which is the, the.
The spam.
Yeah, sorry, the spam, the spam filter.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the 15, where's that, 154228, correct? Do we have a motion for that? Motion by Alderman Roll, second by Alderman Farnwell on the question. Clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Farnwell, is there a second? Alderman Roll. No, we amended it, so no. On the question, on the original motion. All right, clerk, do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
The next ordinance, 2021-19, is to amend after 72 parking regulations of the Code of Blue Island to restrict parking on the west side of 129th block of Page Street adjacent to Central Park.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman Roll on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries.
Next resolution, 2021-24, authorizing and approving parking lot closure for a special event on July 24, 2021, entitled Crafted Uptown.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Farnwell on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries.
The final resolution is 2021-25, authorizing and approving block party on Market Street for June 26, 2021.
Mr. Motion? Motion by Alderman Farnwell, second by Alderman Roll on the question. Clerk, do the roll.
I have a question. Do we have to bring every block party to?
I was going to ask that. Let's get through this and then I'll, I think we can make this part of our consent. If there's no objection from the council, we can make it with the handicap like we discussed, the block parties.
It's the staff reuses, right?
Well, I can let you know the block parties when I come to council, but like this lady, you know, was last.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's complete the roll call and.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Farnwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Five ayes.
I agree with Alderman Farnwell. We can add this to the consent agenda along with the handicap stuff. The staff reuses.
Can I give this under clerk's announcements, I can let you, Alderman, know, or I can email the Alderman also and let you know.
Yeah, be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you. All right, number nine, Alderman announcements, reports or comments? Alderman Farnwell.
I guess I'd say that I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. We've passed many, 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 many more things so far in this room than we have not passed. And that's important and I'm glad to see it. There are some issues that I consider to be very important that I'm going to stand firm on, but I do not want them to get in the way of the running of the city. And so I just want everyone to know that, and I think everyone here is working pretty cooperatively on most issues, and that is how it should be. There are also some very important issues that, you know, as I say, I feel very strongly about and I will continue to stand firm on those issues. One thing to note, I get a message here that this meeting is, again, not being broadcast live.
Nothing has been changed by at least our administration, so I need, we need to talk to our media people because that is not, we don't know why.
Okay.
I haven't gotten an answer. I think Mark is looking into it, but it should be broadcast live like it's always been unless there's something we don't know about.
All right. Well, let's, let's try to get that resolved next time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree, Alderman Farnwell, my phone's always on and Calabri, I think we agreed on everything except the one issue.
Right.
And we'll get past this. We should all agree on most things anyway because we were going to hammer it out. So, thank you.
I have a question.
Ben, did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
We are live on TV right now.
On which, on the?
Channel four.
I guess we're not on YouTube, maybe?
No. This doesn't have, our, our system with the cameras doesn't have any way to do that. Zoom had a function that would send it to YouTube, but yeah, since we're in person now, we can't do that anymore.
That answers why.
Is there a way to get us on YouTube? It was a lot of people like watching it that way.
We'd have to upgrade and get software that does that, but yeah.
Could you maybe, you know, find out, let us know what that would take and.
Yeah.
And I add to Alderman Farnwell's concerns, I think we received bids before and we discussed this, the sound system.
Yeah.
I know you pinpointed it's not specifically the wiring. It's more of this and that.
It's the PA system. Because if I, if I plug that mic right there into that camera, it, like, do like the interview style I would do at an event, sounds fine. So it's not the mic, it's not that cable. The speed?
Nine hundred and one?
You hear the buzz going?
Right.
If I. If I, if I cut the broadcast right now, that's still doing that. So that's just specific to this room. It doesn't matter if we're on TV or not. That's just happening in the PA system. And because I'm tapped into the PA system for the audio, I get that. I don't know. I've been here six years and it's.
It's definitely older than that, so. The system, the hard system is when they built this in the 90s, they built this chamber. This was the Moose Club American Legion. They put all this in, so I would say it's 90s like everything else. I was in grade school in the 90s. High school, actually, it was high school still in 90s.
It's before 94 I wasn't born, so.
I was pushing for to get the system upgraded years ago because I know some people at home, you know, they're going to see it and they never did.
Let's get, let's get this in ballpark, figures. Let's then discuss it the next time you get a chance.
So I need suggestions of where to get someone that knows about PA systems because I know about the whole broadcast aspect of it. I'm just tapping into the PA system. I don't specialize in those.
We'll talk with the administrators, yeah. Okay, thank you, Ben. Now you clarified that issue. All right, one more.
So just to get it official and out there, because I am entitled to do this under the ordinance, I have appointed Odison Sturt as my legislative council. Any other Aldermen, welcome to join in that.
City attorney?
So the resolution that was before the board relating to legislative council did not pass?
There's still a, there's a, there's a resolution in force from the last city council.
That's not correct.
We're entitled to it by ordinance.
You may be entitled to it, but the resolution itself failed?
No, no.
So there's no legislative council appointment at this time?
No, from the previous city council, there is, that was never voted, that was never changed.
The previous city council appointed Montana and Welsh.
Right, exactly.
Right, so we've never, we've never been removed as legislative council. We're now city attorneys, but the only resolution that you approved was for legislative council to be Montana and Welsh. Your legislative council resolution for Odison Sturt was not.
Oh, the resolution simply states that the city council may appoint a legislative attorney. It doesn't mean who the legislative attorney is.
I, I disagree with that argument.
Go read it.
And I know that.
This is why I want a legislative council, incidentally.
You can have many reasons to want legislative council. I think it's been discussed many times how unnecessary that is, given the expense and how everyone's agreeing on these motions. Legislative council was obtained years after there was years of disagreement with city officials in the Alderman. There's no big disagreement here.
All right, you've opened the door. I'm going to say what I'm going to have to say now. Things have already happened where I don't trust our current city attorney and I'm not going to, and therefore I need a legislative council.
And I, I agree. I don't want to go down this path here and I've mentioned many times, I'm not against the idea. I was sat on the board when we passed it. I'm against to the particular firm.
I understand that.
So I think.
You have, you have appointed a firm that I don't agree with and I'm going to appoint a firm that I agree with and I trust.
The difference is the mayor has a temporary employment power and you do not. The resolution that was brought was not passed.
Go read the, go read the. Go read it.
The city council at the time had a vote on both the resolution and hiring Montana Welsh with a super majority.
It didn't have to vote. It just said the city council can appoint.
We'd had a vote.
No, and that the compensation was a question of the vote.
We had a vote and then the current attorney at the time fought hard against it. We had a vote for each motion, so.
Well, we're going to have to settle this one anyway. That's.
Another, another day.
Another day.
Any other Alderman comments or concerns?
I would just like to say that, I mean, if, if I, if I am reading the ordinance correct, that I have a right to legislative council. I, as, as my right to legislative council, I appoint Kerry Horvath as my legislative council.
Yeah, you can, you can say that, but you need a, you guys operate as a whole, a majority of a whole, and you have to put a motion on the floor, which you guys did, and it failed. And I did the veto anyway. So you can't individually appoint unless you're free to appoint and pay whoever you want. Yeah, I mean, I paid my own attorneys to give me a lot of answers when I was fighting the council wars. And then I was like, well, would you do legislative council? But out of pocket, I did it myself until we got past the city council. So we can disagree on, on the wordage, but you guys have to operate as a whole. You can't individually appoint.
We'll, we'll come back to it.
All right, anything else? Any comments and concerns from Alderman?
I'd like to remind everybody to remind your community members to review the services. For the rest of us, we can have left before the 5:00.
Are you going to run out?
Oh, no. Any other comments or concerns? Treasurer, you got anything?
No, no comment. I do apologize for coming in late. I was at a other board meeting, board meeting that I had. No comment at this time.
All right, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Farnwell, second by Alderman Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.